It is six o'clock. I'd like to welcome you to the Thursday, May 16th, 2024 Meeting of the Glen County Board of Commissioners. I have asked Commissioner Fendig to lead us in our invocation tonight and Commissioner Tosterson to lead us in our pledge. If you'd stand with us, please.
Thank you. The chairman could be very nice because he knows a lot of hard things going on today in my life, everybody's life, but probably just exactly what I need to do. Fire your head. By the God in Jesus' name, we lift our hearts and our prayers to you. It's a tumultuous time, tumultuous day for our world, for our nation, for our families, for those who love and know us. We just ask that you open the handles up and give us an extra load of grace and mercy and love this day and the rest of the week. We'll even go for that in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Would everyone face the flag? Hand on heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Mr. Chairman. I move to add item 3.5 to the published agenda to present a proclamation recognizing May 19th through the 25th, 2024 as National Public Works Week.
Have a motion from Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Booker. Any discussion? All in favor of amending our agenda, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. All right. So tonight, we do have a number of proclamations that we would like to present, and I'll start with the National Police Week. This is a proclamation recognizing May 12th through 18th of 2024 as National Police Week and the contributions as well as significance of the National Law Enforcement Memorial and Museum. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy designated May 15th each year as Peace Officers' Memorial Day and the week in which that date falls as Police Week. This year, Police Week is being recognized from Sunday, May 12th to Saturday, May 18th. And whereas the National Law Enforcement Memorial and Museum will hold ceremonies, including the 36th Annual Candlelight Vigil to honor the fallen officers whose names have recently been added to the memorial, and whereas the National Police Week serves as a time to honor the fallen officers whose names have recently been added to the memorial and as a collaborative effort of many organizations dedicated to honoring America's law enforcement community. And whereas this year, the names of 282 officers killed in the line of duty are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. These 282 officers include 118 officers who were killed in the line of duty during 2023, plus an additional 164 officers who died in previous years. There are currently 24,067 names engraved on the memorial. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Glen County Board of Commissioners that May 12th through the 18th of 2024 shall be recognized as National Police Week 2024 and the contributions of all law enforcement professionals be recognized for their service and sacrifices they have made on behalf of the citizens of Glen County, the state of Georgia, and the United States of America. In witness thereof, I set my hand this 16th day of May 2024. We have Chief Abner here tonight. And Sheriff Jump, I see you back there. Would you come forward as well, please? Are there other officers that you would like to bring forward either?
On behalf of the Glen County Board of Commissioners, I'd like to present this proclamation to you. To the police officers for their sacrifice, all the work that is done day in and day out to keep us safe, Glen County is certainly a path to blue county. Also want to recognize that we award our flags to have masks in celebration and in recognition, I guess, better good of National Police Week. Thank you both for the service you do. Thank you to all of our first responders, Glen County officers, no matter which agency or capacity they serve, we thank you for the service to Glen County. Thank you, sir.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you to the commissioners for recognizing the police. You're here to vote for Sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next in our list of proclamations for this evening, like to recognize the National Safe Boating Week. This proclamation is in recognition for May 18th through 24th, 2024 as National Safe Boating Week. For over 100 million Americans, boating continues to be a popular recreational activity from coast to coast and everywhere in between. People are taking to the water and enjoying time together boating, sailing, paddling, and fishing. During National Safe Boating Week, the U.S. Coast Guard and its federal, state, and local safe boating partners encourage all boaters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly. Safe boating begins with preparation. The Coast Guard estimates that human error accounts for the most boating accidents and that life jackets could prevent nearly 75% of boating fatalities. Through basic boating safety procedures, carrying lifesaving emergency distress and communication equipment, wearing life jackets, attending safe boating courses, participating in free boat safety checks, and staying sober when navigating, we could help ensure boaters on America's coastal, inland, and offshore waters stay safe throughout the season. National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to the important lifesaving tips for the recreational boaters so that they can have a safer, more fun experience out on the water throughout the year. Whereas on average, 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States, 75% of these are fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Glen County Board of Commissioners, do hereby support the goals of the Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May 18th through 24th of 2024 as National Safe Boating Week and the start of year-round effort to promote safe boating and urge all those who boat to practice safe boating habits and to wear a life jacket at all times while boating. In witness thereof, I set my hand this 16th day of May 2024. We have with us tonight from the Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla Commander Bill Hilliard and Coast Guard Auxiliary Vice Flotilla Commander Josh Paseka. Did I say that right?
You have to go forward, sir.
I'm sorry? All right. If you guys would come forward, please. We wanted to give you our support in National Boat Safety Week. We'd like to thank you for what you do on behalf of safe boating, and we thank you again for being here.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, we want to recognize the National EMS Week. This proclamation recognizes May 19th through 25th of 2024 as National EMS Week honoring our past, forgiving our future, and forging, sorry, forging our future and celebrating their 50th anniversary. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, law enforcement officers, dispatchers, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and trained members of the public. And whereas emergency medical providers, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas the residents of Glen County benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly trained individuals, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishment of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Glen County Board of Commissioners that the week of May 19th through 25th, 2024 is Emergency Medical Services Week. In witness thereof, I set my hand this day, the 16th day of May 2024. Who do we have coming forward? Chief Vinnie.
On behalf of the entire Glen County Board of Commissioners, we want to present this proclamation to you for all the emergency responders to our medical services. We thank you for the job that you do day in and day out, the selfless dedication that you show the citizens of Glen County, and it's our honor to present this proclamation to you tonight. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I move to... Only 12 more, y'all. Sorry, I missed that one. It was what we added. All right. Our next and our last proclamation for the evening is in recognition of National Public Works Week. This proclamation recognizes May 19th through 25th of 2024 as National Public Works Week, advancing quality of life for all. Whereas public work professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Glen County. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public work professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of Glen County to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public work programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, be it now, therefore be it proclaimed by the Glen County Board of Commissioners that the week of May 19th through 25th of 2024 as National Public Works Week, I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public work professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. In witness thereof, I set my hand this 16th day of May 2024. Mr. Smith and any of your public works team that would come forward?
Yes, bring them all on.
Danny, it's our pleasure and on behalf of the Glen County Board of Commissioners, we want to present this proclamation to you, to the entire public works team, all the work dedication that you do to provide better roads, better drainage, better everything to the people of Glen County. Thank you so much for what you do and for your service to our community.
Thank you. Thank you, man.
Good evening. I would just like to thank the board for recognizing public works and recognizing this team who does the hard work and is out there every day interacting and trying to get everything accomplished. So thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the consent agenda for general business with the exception of anything a commissioner wishes to pull.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the consent agenda for general business. Any discussion or any item to pull? Being none, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the consent agenda for finance with the exception of anything a commissioner wishes to pull.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Booker to approve the consent agenda for finance. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. That moves us to item number 38 under Appointments to nominate three citizens for consideration of appointment to serve on the Glen Brunswick Memorial Hospital Authority. The hospital authority will make the final appointment. The term begins immediately upon appointment and ends April 30th, 2028. Applications received from Angela Hayes, John George, Michael Mazada, Don Snell, and Sherri Sweek.
Mr. Chairman. I would like to make the nominations for the three nominations for the hospital authority. I would like to nominate John George, Don Snell, and Sherri Sweek as our three nominees.
Have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Sweek. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. That moves us to item number 38 under Appointments to nominate three citizens for consideration of appointment to serve on the Glen Brunswick Memorial Hospital Authority. The hospital authority will make the final appointment. The term begins immediately upon appointment and ends April 30th, 2028. Applications received from Angela Hayes, John George, Michael Mazada, Don Snell, and Sherri Sweek.
Mr. Chairman. I would like to make the nominations for the three nominations for the hospital authority. I would like to nominate John George, Don Snell, and Sherri Sweek as our three nominees.
Have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Sweek. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Under General Business, item number 39, approve the revised contract to Thomas &amp; Hutton for Project Management Services for the St. Simon's Island Gateway and Torres Causeway Traffic Improvement Project and the Dimory Road Improvement and Drainage Project in the amount of $1,447,600 with funding to be, funding for the project by the Splotch 2022 Fund and rescind the board's prior action of approval of April 18th, 2024. Mr. Talbot.
Good evening, Commissioners. Resident Talbot, procurement officer. As the chairman read out this item, it is to approve a revised contract to Thomas &amp; Hutton for the St. Simon's Island Gateway Project and Dimory Road Improvement Project. The board approved or awarded this contract to Thomas &amp; Hutton back on April 18th, 2024. Thomas &amp; Hutton reached out, requested some revisions to the contract. Those revisions were reviewed by county staff and the county attorney's office. Some were agreed upon, some were not, and this action is to rescind the initial award and approve a revised contract to Thomas &amp; Hutton. I'm available for any questions.
All right, Commissioners, if we have any questions for Mr. Talbot. So the dollar amount is the same?
Yes, sir. The dollar amount and the scope of services is all the same. It was more of a revision to contract language to bring it in line with professional services and a consultant versus construction.
All right. Any other discussion?
That's what I wanted to ask.
All right. So do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the revised contract to Thomas &amp; Hutton for Project Management Services for the St. Simon's Island Gateway and Torres Causeway Traffic Improvements Project and the Dimory Road Improvements and Drainage Project in the amount of $1,447,600 with funding to be provided, to be provided by the Splotch 22 Fund and rescind the board's prior action of approval on April 18th, 2024.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Sweek. Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Rofalski made the motion. I'm sorry. And a second by Commissioner Sweek for the record. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. We had no people sign up for public comment tonight. We do have need of executive session, Mr. Attorney, for the purpose of...
We do, Mr. Chairman. We have property matters and pending litigation to discuss. Please.
Do I have a motion to go into executive?
Mr. Chairman, motion to go into executive session for property matters and pending litigation.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Tosterson, a second by Commissioner Sweek to go into executive session. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Did I say it again? I apologize, folks. I've got Commissioner Tosterson on the brain and it's getting hot in this jacket. So the motion was made by Commissioner Rofalski and seconded by Commissioner Sweek. And all in favor, please raise your right hand to confirm. Thank you. We stand in recess? No, I need a motion to go into recess or not? Executive session for, yes. We got that in a second. Stand recessed. Stand recessed.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to come out of executive session.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski to come out of executive session? Did I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Fendig. All in favor, please raise your right hand. That's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Commissioners to approve the executive session minutes from the May second, two thousand and twenty-four executive session.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Fendig to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve recommendations regarding property acquisition and pending litigation.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Sweat. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Right hand. That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Rofalski, a second by Commissioner Fendig to adjourn. All in favor, please raise your right hand and say hallelujah. We stand...